Take the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is our consent docket. We'll approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 16th, 2023. Receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held September 12th, 2023. Approve and appoint Gary Byrd to the Moore Urban Renewal Authority to fill the remaining term of Kathy Griffin due to expire June 30th, 2024. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2023-24 in the amount of $7,665,795.13.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item three is consider the appointment of Greg Sutterfeld to Chris Jackson, James Hayes, and Megan Holman to the plumbing board for a two-year term. Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item four, consider the appointment of Mark White, Tom Baker, Noah Garu, Darrell Elrod, and to the electric board for a two-year term.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item five, consider the appointment of Frank Randall, Rodney J. Hadley, and Corey L. Stanley to the mechanical board for a two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item six, consider the appointment of an interview committee to interview applicants to fill an open seat on the planning commission. And Elizabeth, did you want to... Sorry, we didn't mean to cut you off earlier.
That's quite all right. We have one open seat on the planning commission. We did advertise this on the social media, posted at the city offices and also through one full cycle of the water bill insert. We received four applicants. We need to decide on one. And there is a proposed schedule that I outlined in the agenda, but of course, it's clearly up to the council as to when you would like to do this. In the past, they... You have had interviews, and I'm assuming that you would like to do the same thing.
Yeah, I think so.
How many council members have we won? Do we... Have we decided? Is it just kind of up?
Kathy and Louis are former planning commission member. Melissa, are you?
Yep.
Well, there are any volunteers, I think, we can have up to three.
Is this to fill Chris Ruckman's seat?
I'm sorry?
Is this to fill Chris Ruckman's seat?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll volunteer.
I'll do it.
Then I make a motion to nominate Louis, Melissa, and Kathy.
Second.
Okay, we have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Congratulations. Item seven is consider approval of a contract with GovBuild Permit Land Use Cemetery and License Tracking System, including online citizen portal for a total implementation cost of $124,000 and annual subscription cost of $41,990 as a sole source provider.
Thank you. If IT could allow the Zoom participant into the meeting, I would appreciate that. In this year's fiscal budget, funds were allocated for a new land use permitting and licensing tracking system to replace the current intergov system. Community development and the IT staff members have sat in on demonstrations from six online permitting systems. We had a couple of or several requirements that each of the firms had to fulfill. One was utilizing the Word templates for forms and permits to allow self-perform customization. Two, be compatible with Bluebeam, which is a plan review software, ArcGIS, and Microsoft Outlook Calendar. Three was to be customizable on customer online portable with portal, excuse me, online portal with a fee estimator, electronic plan upload, and other commonly provided items with that. And not reliant on third-party implementation teams, but having all implementation in-house and support an escrow or prepayment account for trades and provide robust customer service to city staff. After reviewing the six candidates, the company GovBuild was the only system that was deemed adequate to fill our needs. The finance department, when we worked with them to determine whether or not the GovBuild system would interconnect with the Munis financial system that we have, in looking at the functionality of the GovBuild system, they did determine that this GovBuild offered more functionality for the city clerk than intergov. And by moving all of their operations off of intergov to GovBuild, the city could discontinue intergov, Tyler Cemetery, and ENCODE 9 systems altogether. And this would streamline our paid subscription services to the one company. And in addition, by discontinuing ENCODE 9, IT would be able to free up one server for other operations. So the... As I stated before, this was included in the this year's fiscal budget. It did include $150,000 for implementation and the first annual subscription fee. The total cost for all of the GovBuild modules, and this does include cemetery, which was not originally budgeted for, is $165,990. So the cemetery module is almost $16,000. And that was not included in the budget. But the annual subscription fee for all the modules is quoted at $41,990. Staff recommends approval of GovBuild as a sole source provider for the service. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. In addition, William Velasco with GovBuild is here from Arizona, and he is available to also answer any questions. I did include their proposal in your packet where it gives you screenshots of what city staff would see and what the customers would see on the online portal.
So is this a cloud-based system?
It is, yes.
And all the API integrations, we've got preparations made to make all that work?
Yes. That has been looked at extensively.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Any other questions? We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, William.
Thank you, sir. Item eight is consider the preliminary plat of DM Estates located southeast quarter of Section 18, Township 10, Range 2 West, being north of Southeast 4th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road. Application by Sanjay Marika. The planning commission recommended approval six to one. It's in Ward 2. And I believe that we're going to table this item. Is that correct?
Yes, we would appreciate that.
I make a motion to table item eight.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion to table item eight. And a second, call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item's tabled. Item nine is consider rezoning application number RZ-1036, located in the southwest of Section 2, Ship 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Northeast 27th Street, east of I-35, from A-2 Suburban Agriculture District to C-3 PUD General Commercial District Planned Unit Development and I-1 PUD Light Industrial District Planned Unit Development. And approve ordinance number 2123, application by CHI Oklahoma Real Estate Partners for Foshee and Bullard PC. Planning commission recommended denial 4-3. This is in Ward 2.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located north of northeast 27th Street and east of I-35. The property is currently zoned A-2. It is undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to develop the frontage along I-35 as retail and commercial uses, with the remainder of the property being developed as light industrial wholesaling, storage, and distribution center with the potential for outdoor storage. To achieve the desired development, the applicant is requesting a rezoning to C-3 and I-1 as a planned unit development. Public water and sewer are available to the south of the subject site along Pol Road and Northeast 27th Street. Both utilities would be... Would have to be extended to serve the site. Stormwater detention for this development is required. There is a small portion of FEMA floodplain located on the southern boundary of the site along the I-35 Service Road, and all city and FEMA requirements for development within a floodplain would be required. Access is provided by both the I-35 Service Road and Pol Road. A traffic study was completed to assess the potential impacts on the transportation network. And although the traffic study did look at all the major streets in the area, Pol Road is considered the most problematic due to the site distance problems caused by the railroad underpass on 27th Street. So the... Just to give you a very brief overview of the traffic study, with the existing traffic that we have today, the anticipated future developments of QuickTrip and E-Express and the BNSF Logistics Center and this proposed development, so when you take all of those together, the traffic at Pol Road intersection is anticipated to significantly increase from a 2028 projected of not including the subject site of 17 trips in the AM peak hour left-hand turning movement along Northeast 27th to Pol Road to a 2028 buildout with this proposed development of 116 in the AM peak hour, the same turning movement. The northwest 27th Street and Pol Road intersection is the only intersection on the network that is anticipated to have a level of service of E and below at full buildout. And just to remind you, the level of service is like a grading system. So the lower the letter, the worse it is, and E is pretty low. The traffic study gives recommendations on improvements that will be needed to accommodate the increased traffic from this development. These recommendations include a signal light at Northeast 27th Street and Pol Road intersection as well as east and westbound dedicated left-turn lanes along 27th Street at Pol Road. The traffic study anticipates that once these improvements are made, the level of service will be raised at this intersection to a level of service of B or better. So a great improvement. Based on the existing site distance problems at the intersection and because of the traffic hazards this creates, staff does recommend that if this is approved, the applicant provide a mitigation plan with the submittal of the first final plat. The applicant is utilizing a planned unit development to expand upon the allowable uses in the I-1 zoning district while providing protections to preserve the commercial integrity of the I-35 corridor. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. This proposal includes the following amenities. The industrial tract shall have a minimum of 70% masonry or architectural metal facade. There would be no more than 30% EPIS permitted. Required landscaping amounts shall exceed city code by 15%. This would be a total of 549 trees and 902 shrubs that would be required for the entire site. Credit for preserved landscaping or trees is allowed per city code. All outdoor storage, including semi-trailers, would be screened from I-35 by a six-to-eight-foot tall berm or a masonry wall or a wood fence with brick columns at 20 feet apart. And the outdoor storage is limited to 20 feet in height. All the dumpsters shall be located in areas screened from public streets with a fence or masonry wall enclosure. Any outdoor storage should be set back a minimum of 25 feet from all PUD boundary lines. And finally, this was a... The last amenity concession that was made per the request of the First Baptist Church, a landscape buffer along the south boundary line will be required. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be community commercial along the frontage of I-35 and light industrial along Pol Road. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the plan, and because the application does reserve the I-35 frontage for commercial and retail opportunities while providing ample room for the industrial job creation, both of these work to meet the intent of the comprehensive plan, and amendment is not required. If planning commission and city council believe that this PUD gives appropriate protections and amenities to preserve the integrity of the I-35 corridor and protect the neighboring properties from unsightly outdoor storage, staff recommends approval of this application contingent upon the traffic mitigation plan to be submitted with the first final plat of the industrial tract. And special attention of this plan should be given to the site distance limitations and the safety of the traveling public. There were no citizens who attended the planning commission meeting. The planning commission did ultimately recommend denial based on concerns about the traffic. If you have any questions of me, I would be happy to answer them, and the applicant is also here.
So help me understand the purpose of the truck court. What happens in there? What's the purpose of that?
My understanding is it's a parking and basically a loading-unloading type of area.
The buildings are going to hold a commodity of some type?
I will let the applicant speak to that because I'm probably not the right person.
Good evening. David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So yeah, so the truck court is intended to reflect where parking vehicular movement will happen within the site. So there's a host of different types of businesses that could go here. Presumably, some of them could have, you know, overhead doors with a product being stored inside. So a bit of a background, we started working with staff on this back in February. So we spent a lot of time working with staff, understanding the importance of maintaining that commercial corridor along I-35. So the way we've drafted our pud is it is broken out in a separate track with a separate legal description, with separate development regulations. So this isn't just a picture. This... The PUD itself would require commercial development beyond that frontage. So we tried our best to do, you know, a design that would reflect, I think, what's important for more with commercial on the frontage, but realization of, you know, behind that commercial, industrial is what you would expect to see. Yes, you know, just to the north, that's what you see in Oklahoma City. We do think that the architectural regulations that we have within our PUD are something heightened that you wouldn't normally expect to see in industrial development. So we think that, coupled with we are exceeding the landscape code by at least 15%, ensures that this will be a quality development for the city of Moore. And the traffic, we understand that there is a traffic issue that needs to be addressed. Staff has suggested that at the time of the final plat, we present a mitigation plan. Planning commission, we agreed to that mechanism to achieve something to be fixed with the traffic, and we think that's the time to do it. It's a bit early now because we don't know exactly when the full buildout will be, who the end users might be. So at the time that we're ready for a final plat, that'll be the time that we're ready to really sit down and figure out what... Figure out what the mitigation plan needs to be.
That looked like a substantial natural barrier to the south property, which is the church's property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's a pretty big space. How big is that natural space there?
It varies, but a couple hundred feet to at least maybe 150 feet. Yeah, so it's significant, and it's all either detention or treed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions?
Make a motion.
I'd say I appreciate you guys working with the church and making those changes to accommodate and make sure that it's the best for Moore, so.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And Elizabeth, just so I'm clear, the planning commission's biggest concern was the traffic issues on 27th?
That's correct.
And so the mitigation that is delivered with the final plat is that is the cost of that mitigation, where does that fall? Who's providing the cost for that mitigation?
Well, I will direct... I don't think any decisions have been made at this point. Typically, they fall to the developer, fully upon the developer, and I'll just leave it at that for right now.
Well, I would just... I know that 27th Street and Pol Road, when we have accidents there, they're pretty severe, serious in nature. And I understand a stoplight would probably be the only way to really address that. But, you know, I don't want 27th Street to start looking like 19th Street where you have a stoplight every quarter of a mile, so. You know, I don't know. I know at one time there was talk of BNSF, of there maybe being a stoplight over on the west or the east side of the tracks. I just think those are all things to consider, and if we're going to put one, you know, maybe we're just going to do one versus looking at installing a bunch of other ones.
I'd be interested in seeing the mitigation when we get to that point, so.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item 10 is consider Envision More 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 5, located in the northwest quarter of Section 10, Township 10, Range 3 West, being north of Northwest 24th Street and west of Janeway Avenue from employment mixed use to transitional commerce. Applicant is Brent Irish. Planning commission recommended approval 7-0, Ward 2.
Items number 10 and 11 are companion items on your agenda. This site is located north of Northwest 24th Street and west of Janeway Avenue. The property is zoned C4, is currently developed with two existing buildings. The applicant is proposing to develop a commercial recreation business that is 2.6 acres in total size. It would have batting cages in the indoors in the existing buildings, and an outdoor baseball diamond would be constructed on the vacant property on the site. To achieve the desired development, this property must be rezoned to a C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Stormwater detention for this development is not required because it is an existing development. However, any new impervious surface additions would be offset with the appropriate stormwater detention if those occur. And access is provided by Northwest 24th Street. The subject site is located in a heavy commercial area with commercial zoning to the north, south, and east. The high-density apartments are located to the west of the site. The general area has historically supported commercial uses that rely on outdoor storage, primarily vehicles, for their business operations. Although this request is for participant in Recreation Outdoor Use Unit Classification that supports the outdoor baseball diamond, if it is approved, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that any of the uses under C5 would be allowed by right at this location. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be employment mixed use. It is intended to develop into an office park-like setting. The applicant is requesting a change to transitional commerce. And while transitional commerce is intended to create a buffer between arterial roads and neighborhoods, it does allow for outdoor storage and activities. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. And this application does seek to reinvest in a historically blighted area of town. If the planning commission and council believe that the development and investment potential in this blighted area does outweigh the potential negative effects of the outdoor storage and activities being adjacent to the high-density residential housing to the west, staff does recommend approval of the companion comprehensive plan amendment application to be changed from employment mixed use to transitional commerce. Staff does have some concerns with the proposed use as C5 zoning does allow for outdoor storage and activities that can cause conflicts with the neighboring land uses. However, in this particular location, with the C5 zoning to the south of the site and the high-density apartments to the west of the site, it is unlikely that users typical of a C4 zoning category, which is usually retail-type uses, would ever be interested in this site. Therefore, if city council deems this location appropriate for outdoor storage and activities, staff recommends approval of this application contingent upon the lighting to be reviewed at the building permit stage to eliminate glare to any abutting residential properties, and a photometric design will be required at the building permit stage. And that all activities, specifically the outdoor activities, would comply with the city's noise ordinance. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
My only concern would just be the lighting, but it sounds like that would be addressed.
And noise is a little bit of a concern, too, when I think about the outdoor diamonds because of what we deal with at Buck Thomas Park, and you've got the apartments there and all that, so.
Yes, and I did... Was able to speak with the police chief about the potential impacts of noise. From our discussion, the big noise concern at Buck Thomas Park is the walk-on music. And this is just a practice field, so there's really no competition. So we think that the walk-on music won't happen, and we think it will just be limited to the actual batting of the ball.
So there won't be any loudspeakers out there or anything like that?
Correct.
Stands full of parents, none of that?
None of that, no.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we just need a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
All right, would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item 11 is consider rezoning application number 1037, located in the northwest quarter of Section 10, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Northwest 24th Street and west of Janeway Avenue from C4 Planned Shopping Center District to C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District. And approve ordinance number 2223, application by Brent Irish.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item 12 is consider rezoning application number RZ-1038, located in the southeast quarter of Section 19, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being north of Southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road from A-1 Rural Agriculture District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. And approve ordinance number 2323, application by Frazna Development LP. Hossen Frazna. Planning commission recommended approval 7-0, it's in Ward 1.
Vice Mayor Council, this site is located north of Southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road. The property is currently zoned A1 and is undeveloped. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with unspecified neighborhood commercial uses on 3.77 acres. Stormwater detention for this development is required. FEMA floodplains and floodways are located along the north and western boundary of the site, and all FEMA requirements for development within a floodplain are required. Additionally, this application will be subject to a required 50-foot riparian buffer between the floodplain and commercial development as adopted in the 2021 drainage criteria. Access is provided by South Sunny Lane Road and Southeast 19th Street, and all curb-cut requests will be reviewed at the plating stage to reduce any unnecessary driveways where possible. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be neighborhood- The envision more twenty forty plan calls this location to be neighborhood commercial, and it should be, have office, retail, and service uses that are convenient to residential and employment areas. Neighborhood commercial areas are located near arterial roads and adjacent to residential development. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the comprehensive plan, and because this application is speculative, with no particular commercial users identified, if it meets all the city codes, it will work to further the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and the amendment is not required. This area will experience significant residential growth in the upcoming years. It does have three approved residential developments to the south and the west. These are Cardinal Landing, Cypress Creek, and Urbansky Farm, and therefore, this area is anticipated to support and need neighborhood commercial uses in the future. Due to the subject site's location at the intersection of two arterial roadways and compliance with the comprehensive plan, staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen is consider awarding bid number two zero two four dash zero zero five to confidence Ford of Norman for the purchase of six Ford Police Interceptor utility and all-wheel-drive sport utility vehicles, in the amount of two-hundred-eighty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-four dollars is the sole bidder.
Vice Mayor Council, these are six marked vehicles, so they're part of our routine fleet maintenance that was discussed in budget, would recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Do you expect to get these quickly, or could it be a year? Or do you know?
Great question, sir.
Okay.
So the important part of, part of this accepting the bid tonight, and we will get POs, the industry is very uncertain right now. We could get them, but it's highly unlikely. They might have to, we might have to wait until twenty-twenty-five, but we have to have a PO before Ford will even allow us to put our name on the preorder list, and they won't tell us when the preorder list will come out until sometime after January, but we anticipate that the preorder list will come out in March, which will just be us putting our name on a list saying, "We have a PO and we have money waiting, let us order." But their discussion, strong discussion, that they're not gonna make twenty-twenty-fours because they're so far behind on twenty-twenty-threes, and we'll have to wait till twenty-twenty-five to get any of these vehicles, except for the next agenda item, which we believe we can get much quicker, but when it comes to the police interceptor package, it's a very much a moving target.
Great, thank you. We have-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is Ford the only vehicle that come, the vehicles come equipped with the interceptor package, or are there other vehicles?
So every major car provider makes a police package, Chevy, Dodge, and Ford. When I say every, those three, and looking at different options for vehicles, all three vendors have given us the same, they're all in the same situation, and there's still uncertainty, no matter what product you buy. We've been with Ford for many years now, and we're comfortable with them. They still are the leading vehicle in the market, and we don't see any advantage to going to a different vehicle at this point.
Well, their package fits more the best, so.
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, had a motion and a second. You can call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item fourteen is consider awarding bid number two zero two four dash zero five to confidence Ford of Norman for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-four Ford Explorer four-by-four base model sport utility vehicles, in the amount of eighty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars, as the sole bidder.
Vice Mayor Council, I don't want to come across as I lied, because I did not lie to you with the previous. That was the police interceptor package, which is a marked police car, which has a whole host of amenities capable for patrol work, so vehicle pursuits, emergency response, and different things like that. These two vehicles are more of a civilian package that would replace detective vehicles, so detectives, they don't drive police package vehicles, so they're a little bit cheaper, but they also are a little bit more of a civilian model vehicle, which makes them a little bit more easily to get.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item fifteen is consider authorizing staff to solicit proposals for the repair parts management program for the, for city equipment and vehicle repair and replacement parts.
Vice Mayor and Council, what we're asking for is authorization to send out requests for proposals for this repair parts management program, and the types of companies that we would send them to would be like Autozone, Western Auto, NAPA, and those, those folks that already have stores across the United States and are very efficient and, and do a good job of monitoring and determining what kind of inventories and so forth that they have in their store. What we would be asking for in the RFP is essentially to have them bring in a, and we're, we are large enough now where we need to hire a parts manager for our equipment maintenance group, and what we thought we would do is, is contract out to somebody like NAPA or Autozone or something like that, where they would actually bring in a, a full-time parts person that would manage our, our shop and our parts program, and the way it would operate is, it would just like be, be a mini-store. They would provide inventory for the types of parts that we need for our vehicles and our equipment, and the, it's, the accountability, we believe, of our inventory would be much better, because essentially, you know, when we come, a mechanic comes to get a part, you know, there's gonna be a ticket, there's gonna be a sales receipt, and then at the end of the month, we would get a monthly bill. We think that this would be more efficient. Currently, our mechanics spend a lot of time tracking down parts and trying to determine where they can find them and get them at. This would be the responsibility of this, of whichever company would, would be the best proposal, and, and another thing that, probably a bigger factor, is we have about three-hundred-and-sixty vehicles and pieces of equipment that we maintain and operate. I think we spent somewhere around six-hundred-thousand dollars buying parts for equipment this last year, and so we think that we could see a cost savings, because typically, when we go, you know, when we go to one of these stores, we see a forty to fifty percent markup, and I, in visiting with cities that have gone through this, Oklahoma City utilizes this program, Norman, the city I came from utilized it, and, and when you get, when you get to that size where you buy enough parts, it becomes cost-effective to do, more cost-effective to do it this way. We, we would see probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, fifteen to twenty percent markup instead of, you know, the forty to fifty that we pay now, and we would see a significant cost savings from that. So with that, we're just requesting that you approve us and authorize us to go ahead and go out and-
This is a service that these companies already do other places?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not out of the ordinary?
No, no, as I said, Oklahoma City, Norman, Lawton does it, and, you know, it depends on the size.
I believe they have a piece of software, but a human to go along with it.
Yes, yeah.
That was the part I was struggling with.
Yeah, the, the person to operate it would, would go along with it, and, and in actuality, our mechanics would not have access to the parts room.
Right, right. No, I get that.
It's just like it's a store. They go in and say, "We need this part," and if they don't have it, then they'll have it to you the next day, probably.
Is our current parts room large enough to accommodate?
Well, the, the new parts room is large enough, you know, to accommodate something like this at this point in time, you know. In the future, we may need to expand it a little, but we certainly have room to do that now with what we've done with the new facility, but, you know, we're right on the cusp of, you know, the, the edge of where it, it becomes more profitable to do something like this, because we, you know, we're, we're large enough now where we spend enough money on parts, and if we can see those cost savings that we anticipate through an RFP, and we know that other communities have received, larger communities, but, you know, it, it should, it should work out pretty well for us.
There's also cost savings for the mechanic's time not having to go out and-
Oh, yeah, much more efficient, yes, much more efficient, yeah. And then, and then, too, you know, folks like accounting and, and, and the clerks who have to do the requisitions for every single part that we buy now, we would just get a monthly bill, you know, that would list everything, you know, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, no more discussion. We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item sixteen is consider authorizing the purchase and installation of an audio/video system for the municipal courtrooms from Ford Audio-Video Systems in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars, using state contract number ITSW one zero two one, using court technology funds.
Vice Mayor Council, this is a much-needed improvement to our two courtrooms that we have, to our audio/video system in the courts. This will allow new microphones to be installed at the podium. There will also be a microphone installed at the witness chair, and the judge will also have a microphone as well. It will allow the recording of all audio, everything that is said, able to be recorded from the court clerk, will have a little push button, able to record, able to record. There'll also be two fifty-inch flat-panel TV screens installed, as well as, I believe it's a twenty-two-inch display that's going to be in the judge's bench. Currently, right now, whenever there is body cam or something being shown on the TV screen, the judge actually has to kind of lean out and kind of look at the TV screen. Now, it'll be right there on the judge's bench, so it's be much better for the judge as well. In the juvenile courtroom, there is going to be a recording device and microphones installed in there as well. The main reason that we really need to have the recording device is for the administration of, collection of our court costs with the new laws in effect. Now, any appeal with the collection of court costs, there has to be a record of it, so that's really where this is being driven.
So no cameras anywhere?
There's no cameras, only audio and video.
Okay.
I'm just curious, how often do we have municipal trials?
It would be three, well, there's three dockets a month, so there's, yeah, there's trials.
Well, they're always, I know people come in and they have, have a traffic ticket, it's probably the majority of it. How much, how often do we have a trial?
Every, every, every three times a month, we would have a trial docket. Yeah, and sometimes there are ten set for trial.
You have a jury?
There's no, no jury trial, no, they're all bench trials.
Judge only.
They're all bench trials.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Item seventeen, consider approval of fund transfer between streets and sanitation. Increase the budget for technology fees collected in previous years. Collect available ARPA funding, budget project funds for improvements at North Moore Avenue, and budget carryover CDPG monies.
Vice Mayor Council, this budget amendment will allow us to move budgeted equipment savings where we overbudgeted, or got a good deal actually on some equipment and fund six, to move it over to fund five, to fund some of the needs on fund five. And then we have several revenues, as you see, that were somewhere carryover revenues from grants that were unexpended, and new revenues that were left unbudgeted in the prior fiscal year, it's gonna allow us to budget those funds and utilize them in this fiscal year.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Eighteen is consider authorizing a budgeted purchase of fifteen battery backup systems for traffic signals from Paradigm Traffic Systems in the amount of eighty-four thousand dollars, as the lowest and most responsive quote.
Vice Mayor Council, currently, none of our fifty-four signals have backup power systems, so whenever there is a power outage, we have to rely on citizens calling in and things like that. So the intent is to at least install fifty-four battery-powered systems, but for now, we wanna purchase fifteen and try them on the Nineteenth Street corridor first, and then we'll move out depending on traffic. These systems will switch over automatically when power goes out, and there's also a place where we can actually connect a generator to that for extended power outage, and then once the power comes back on, then it goes off, and then the charging process starts.
So what's the estimated battery life on these units?
It can last up to maybe five hours.
Five hours, but for the battery life long-term, how, so five years, that battery will recharge and be used and recharge or something?
Two to five.
Two to five, okay.
All right, any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item nineteen is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Ford F-350 crew cab and chassis for building maintenance from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of fifty-two thousand one dollar, using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor Council, items nineteen and twenty are companion items. This is for building maintenance tax. It's gonna replace a two-thousand-and-six vehicle.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, you call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of an eight-foot stall utility body for the twenty-twenty-three Ford F-350 crew cab chassis from Industrial Truck Equipment in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars twenty cents, using state contract number SW one oh six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-one, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of two twenty-twenty-four Ford Transit cargo vans for building maintenance from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred five dollars each, for a total of ninety-two thousand two hundred ten dollars, using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor Council, this is also for building maintenance tax. These are the vans that they use to carry all their tools and equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-two, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three diesel Ford F-550 crew cab and chassis for the street department from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor Council, items twenty-two and twenty-three are companion items. This will be used by a street maintenance crew, who'll be out with street maintenance, fixing streets. This, this is very much needed. It would be like a service truck that is used in the field.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, you call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith? Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-three is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a utility and tool body for the street department from Industrial Truck Equipment in the amount of seventy-five thousand one hundred twenty dollars using state contract number SW zero one zero six.
This is the utility body for the truck in item twenty-two.
Second.
We had a motion and a second. You call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item twenty-four, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Ford F-250 crew cab pickup truck for the street department from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor, Council, this will replace one of the oldest trucks that a street and drainage crew uses.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Everybody doing good? That's a long agenda.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Tony's been at that podium a long time.
Item twenty-five is consider Resolution Number sixty-nine twenty-three concerning bridge inspection responsibility by local government for compliance with the national bridge inspection standards.
Vice Mayor, Council, the National Bridge Inspection Standards mandates that our bridges are inspected every year. And this resolution is to award or to select one of six pre-qualified consultants that Department of Transportation presented to us. And they will be conducting the inspections from April one, twenty-twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
How many bridges do we have?
I knew that was going to come. We have twenty-eight bridges, no, twenty-eight bridges.
Do you believe they're all in pretty good shape?
Yes, the last report that we had, I brought a copy here, all our bridges are good. There are a couple of them that the ratings are kind of borderline, but they are still.
Okay.
Good.
Safe, good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-six, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Ford F-250 crew cab four-wheel drive truck for fleet maintenance from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is also to replace one of the oldest trucks that our fleet mechanics need to go on service calls.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-seven, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Ford F-250 extended cab four-wheel drive truck for fleet maintenance from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars using state contract number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is the last one for me. And this is also to replace one of the oldest trucks our fleet mechanics as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-eight is consider approval of option three of the lease agreement for the purchase of fitness equipment through Kansas State Bank with an annual payment of forty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars eighty-eight cents for a total cost of one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars sixty-four cents. Acquisition cost of one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars forty cents was previously approved by the council on October second, twenty-twenty-three.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is the financing information for the fitness equipment that will be going into the expansion at the station.
So I have to ask one question. I looked through the document and everything. This option appears to be the highest interest rate?
That's what I was.
Can you explain that to me? Of, of, so there were two-year and five-year options?
My question too, yeah.
Couple of times, and this one just happened to be like nine four, nine point four percent interest? And I was just curious as to why we selected this one?
Yep.
Vice Mayor, Council, in looking through this, ironically enough, the, the one with the highest interest rate ended up being the one with the overall lowest cost. So it's counterintuitive, but that was the way it worked out.
So when the hundred and forty-five includes the interest we pay on one thirty-three?
Yes. It's the timing.
The, and the, the difference is because of the down payment we make. It's what, even though it's the highest interest rate, because of the down payment we make, we save, it's the least expensive overall.
Okay. Good enough. Motion to approve.
Makes sense.
Second.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay, but.
Yep, the, would you call the vote, please?
Thanks, Brooks.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-nine is consider approval of a change order totaling thirty-one thousand seventy-four dollars sixty, sixty-two cents to Lighthouse Recreation for the installation of a hundred and nine trash receptacles for all Moore parks.
Vice Mayor, Council, originally the Parks Crew believed that they would be able to do this work, installing this number of trash receptacles. However, it was in the middle of the summer, and due to the workload, they were not able to do that this summer. Therefore, we contracted the work out. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. You can call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item thirty is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FI twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four in the amount of one million three hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred eleven dollars thirty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item thirty-one is the consent docket. A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. B, approve and ratify claims expenditures for FI twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. You call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, consent docket passes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. All members are still present. Item thirty-two is new business. Item A, citizens forum, item's not on the agenda. We did have one citizen sign up, Tim Barnett. Sir, if you'd just come on up and state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes, is that correct, Brooks?
My name's Tim Barnett. I live at thirty-six twelve Ninth Street. And I'm here, I'm listening to you guys talk. And I hear a lot of spending, a lot of spending. And, and you guys can't even keep your city clean. You guys can't even do that. You can't even pick up trash off, off the street. And you're spending all this money. It doesn't make any sense to me. Your, your, all these decisions you guys make. Let's see, yeah, the Urbanski project, I'm claiming that land too. You guys don't deserve that land. What, can I, let me ask you something. How much thought was given to the animals? Where, where are all the animals going to go? When, when you're developing all this nice stuff for your, for your people? What about the animals? Can you guys tell me where all the animals are going to go? And what's, and all this time Moore's been here, all these animals have been living in terror every single day, every day. It's a fight because people don't care. They're getting run off their land. Nobody's speaking up for them, but I am. I'm here to stop it. There's no, there's going to be no more development here, no more. You guys have taken enough, taken way too much. And I'm here to challenge your Christian-based values. I'm here to take this Bible and eradicate it. It, it's poison, it's blasphemous, it's the ultimate form of blasphemy, in my opinion. Opinions are duly respected to Mr., from Mr. Thomas Paine, one of your founding fathers, made sure of that, that opinions are, are to be respected and listened to. And I, and I will, mine will be listened and respected to. And I will bring in a book that Thomas Paine wrote denouncing your Christian religion. Did you guys know that? That he wrote a book called The Age of Reason? And he said, "It's just a parody, a parody on the, on the, on my people's beliefs, on, on worship of the sun." So I'm, this is, this is outrageous. All of this talk about spending and, and not taking care of the earth and the animals? When is that going to, when is that going to stop? Just because that land's there doesn't mean it's yours. It was taken legally, and you all know it, we all know this. And I have backup, I have the lead guitarist, Leonard Skinnerd, Arnold Schwarzenegger's number one stunt noble, Mr. Billy Lucas. A friend of mine, he's a police officer, an investigator from the Houston Police Department. They're all behind me, they're all backing me on this. So either you're going to have to deal with me or you're going to have to deal with them on a public basis. And I don't know if you want to do that or not, but it's up to you. But I would rather deal with me. All I want is the land. I want the land back. I want it in my name. It's going to be a sovereign land again. And nobody's ever going to touch it. The animals are going to be safe, the butterflies are going to be safe. And that's basically it. I'm, I'm sick of it, man. I'm sick of this, this Christian religion, man, it's awful. It is awful.
Thank you for your comments. The, sorry, give me just a second here. The next item is items from the city council trustees. Go ahead.
Well, I just had the opportunity to attend the, the recent police event. And the first time I had been, and I was very impressed with the whole event and the attendance. I would, that was a, a large number of people there and thought it was a really good deal for Crime Stoppers, so.
The, I would just like to announce, we, last Saturday, we had our Red Ribbon Parade in Haunt Old Town, and all of that was a great success in spite of the cold and the rain. I did want to announce the winners of the parade, the Red Ribbon Parade for the schools. It was first place Central Elementary, second place was Central Junior High, and third place was Broadmoor Elementary. And then the winners for just the general float contestants. The first place was the Evans Agency, the Moore Animal Shelter, and a step above school dance. So the Red Ribbon Committee is going to recognize them in a, in a, with some cool stuff. So appreciate everybody that was part of the city and then the volunteers and everyone that just came out. You know, it's just kind of crummy weather, but it was a great event. And so thanks for everybody for being there and supporting that and being a part of it.
Yeah, Haunt Old Town was incredible even with the weather. I mean, it was, it was awesome.
Rundled up and came on out.
And then this is going to be my last council meeting. And I've had, served on our city council for a little over eleven years and have enjoyed every moment of it. I remember when I first got elected, if y'all will give me just a few minutes. And when I first got elected, I would wear, for about a year, I'd wear a jacket and a tie, and I was just so excited to come to these council meetings. And, and then my jacket and tie quit fitting me, so I went ahead and switched back to normal clothes, which was a lot more convenient and comfortable. But I've always enjoyed coming to the meetings and just taking phone calls and emails and text messages from citizens and doing my best to convey their thoughts or concerns to the city staff who would, were always so diligent to go and address those complaints or concerns that the citizens that live here would have. And as a city council person, I so appreciate that. You make the job really easy for us. Because we get the complaint, and then usually we'll call Brooks or maybe one of the department heads and say, "Hey, I know this is a lot, but we need you to fix this here in the next couple of days." And if you can, you always do, and I so appreciate that. Not all councils are that way. But this has just always been a good council, harmonious council. We don't always agree, but we get along, and when we make a decision, we move on to the next thing. And I, again, appreciate all of you that are sitting here and those that have sat here that have moved on. And I would just want to say just a few quick words about everybody, just some of the, the makeup of the council and how it brings just, uh, people with a variety of talents and their personalities, and it, and it works. And, you know, Adam is very passionate about parks and specifically Veterans Park. Uh, and if he could, we'd like to probably spend the majority of the city's budget on Veterans Park. Uh, and what a beautiful park it is, uh, but we appreciate his commitment. And Louis, uh, uh, this agenda, Louis reads this agenda. Uh, I, I do too. But Louis reads the agenda, and he's very well-prepared, uh, for any council meeting and is very, 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 uh, quick to make motions. And, uh, sometimes we just kinda sit here and look at each other, and, but Louis will make the first or the second right away. Uh, and thank you for doing that. And then, uh, um, Melissa, who is, uh, uh, always, uh, my co-part for Ward Two, and I can always call her and get her opinion or her ideas or her thoughts. And she would always tell me, even if we disagreed on stuff, she'd always share her thoughts and opinions. Uh, and I so appreciate that. And then Jason, who is just eager for all of us just to get along and to love each other. Uh, and that's good.
Kinda who I am.
Yes, that's good, and we need that. And has been on the council longer than any, any of us other than our, our mayor. And then, uh, Kathy, who-
That's the best you can say about me? After serving with you for over eleven years, that's all you got? It was an absolute pleasure serving with you, Mark.
We went to Chili's once. Me, you, and Robert, and then that was-
You did?
Yeah, we went to Chili's.
I remember that.
And then Kathy, I always, you're just, uh, a, a lot of positive energy, and I was excited when you were able to come back and be a part of the council. You were in Ward Two when I first got elected.
Served Ward Two.
Yes, and you, uh, that very next day, you gave me a call and introduced, and, and we went, got in the car and just drove around Ward Two and looked at all of it, and you did, were very welcoming to me. And I so appreciated that.
Thank you.
And then, of course, our mayor, who's served and just hasn't been able to be here for a long time, and I know he'd love to be here if he could. And Glenn Lewis is just a really, uh, interesting, uh, man, and he has so much institutional knowledge and will ask, "Why, why do we have this ordinance?" Or, "Why is this code this way?" And he could always tell us why, what it was that happened that the city felt we needed to make an ordinance or a change. And he would also sometimes just say things that you're thinking, "What?" Uh, you know, I remember once he was telling me about, um, these windmills that you could put up in the desert, uh, and they would somehow just capture water. Uh, and he, so he was thinking, "Well, maybe we just put windmills around the city," you know, and get off some of the- And so, I'm just thinking, "It's just, well, it's just one of Glenn's ideas." Uh, and then like six months later, I'm watching TV, and they start talking about these windmills that you can put in the desert, and they actually capture water molecules out of this really arid air and deposit it in, uh, receptacles underground. So, uh, he knows what he's talking about, and so I have definitely appreciated, uh, working with him. Uh, and Brooks, I can't forget Brooks. Now, Brooks is always, you know, I'll be like talking to Brooks about, you know, something, and I'll be animated and excited about it, and he'll just be looking at me. And I'm like, "Is he thinking about golf, his golf game, or is he thinking about lunch? Is he hearing what I'm saying?" And I've learned to just ignore that and just go ahead and say what I need to say. And he is listening, cause he will always acknowledge, and then again, give me a, a response or fix whatever the issue is. So, if I get an opportunity to come back, great. If I don't, that's okay. It has been a wonderful time to serve the people, uh, of the, the, uh, the city of Moore and to sit up here. And again, sometimes we disagree on stuff, but I think the area I've grown the most in is just learning to work with other people. And, you know, if we're good, if we're gonna s- talk about me, which, you know, I've probably grown up a lot and just, uh, you know, had a lot of immaturity, uh, but that has changed. You don't always get your way, and it's okay when you don't get your way. It's just, uh, I like kind of like, uh, what the late David Roberts said, uh, when I first got on council. He said, "Mark, the city is divided up into wards, but we really don't look at it that way. It's what's best for the city. It's not necessarily what's best for Ward Two or One or Three. It's what's gonna be best for the city overall." And that's, was really great advice, and I've tried to listen to that, uh, and apply it to everything that we do. Yes, each of us are voices for the prospective wards that we represent, but ultimately is it what's goods for the, is, is what's good for the city? Cause the city is not all of this equipment that we bought today. Uh, it's the people that live here. And we wanna have a great city and a great community, safe, uh, place to live, and, uh... So, I just wanted to say, thanks, everybody, for giving me an opportunity to, uh, to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. And then, item C is items from the City Manager Trust Manager.
Just a reminder that we have a GeoBond election on November fourteenth, which is a week from tomorrow. Numerous street projects are on this, uh, very important for the city. I think that the record is clear that we've done a good job of being good stewards of the money and have done what we said we would do, so I would encourage everyone to go out and vote. And, uh, Vice Mayor Ham, I will miss, uh, the fact that even though we haven't talked before the meetings, you always had the ability to give my report for me. So, you always knew what I was going to say, so I will miss that.
Uh, and I would also just echo the GeoBond issues that are coming up, that this is no, uh, this is streets, uh, that we're wanting to do, and, um, it, there's no, no fun stuff in this. And it's, it's, at one of the town hall meetings that we had last week, I won't quote the lady verbatim, but she said, "You know," referring to the Geo, uh, uh, items that were gonna be on the Bond issue, "you know, this isn't sexy, but it's darn necessary." Uh, and I think she was right. Uh, the things that we're asking our citizens to vote on are things that we need to help sustain the growth of our city. Uh, and, uh, I would ask that, uh, our voters, please, um, continue to have confidence in your leadership and vote for these things. Anything else? No. Item thirty-three is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney and the ci- and the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, convene take, taking action or taking possible action regarding pending case number C I V two-three-nine-two-five-J filed in the United States District Court by Bill Nocler on behalf of Sean Murray against Jeremy Darwin and Mary Williams, police officers of the city of Moore, and authorize for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statute, uh, three oh seven V four.
Make a motion. We convene to executive session.
Second.
All right. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Will be in executive session. Okay, item B is, uh, or item C, reconvene from executive session. Just let the record show that all, all, uh, members are still present. And item D is the action.
Make a motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Will you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. The next item is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
You call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, we are adjourned.